Things, I'm gonna go ahead and call the study session for May ninth to order for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. And ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Here.
Dr. Robert Eaton. Secretary Arthur Perry, Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
Here as well, thank you. Public comments, anybody wishing to speak from the public on items not on the agenda, but under our jurisdiction? Seeing no one will go to items of study C1 and Scott will give you that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ashen Nolani-Minway will be giving this report.
Thank you.
Members of the board, we currently have two vacancies remaining on our Citizen Advisory Committee and have recently. One up just before you for your consideration of appointment.
That's Sue Lester's.
Yes.
I'd move for approval. I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed. Bob's still not with us?
He is on.
Bob, did you hear the motion in the second? Are you muted? Well, we'll go ahead and consider the motion approved for with four votes, one, one absent temporarily. Okay, item C2.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This report will be given by Michael Baye, our consultant who does waste composition studies. The most recent study he performed was on April 3rd. There was two studies that he performed on on our waste composition study to determine the level of contaminations. And I am going to turn it over to Mr. Baye and he's going to share you the results of his study.
Morning, everybody. Sorry, I was planning on being there in person, but had a little challenge here at the house. So I don't know if Noel Lonnie has my report. To to share, but basically we did the the Monday elusive Monday routes. Always a tough day to schedule, so we did two Monday collections. The first one was an area bounded by Placentia Harbor, Nineteenth Street and Hamilton. Same format was followed. We did random grid patterns on a pretty large load, 12 tons. And then grabbed about 250 pounds, just a little less. So if we could go to the bottom of the page, that's where you kind of see the breakdown of the material. Green waste at 8.52% is a contaminant. It's supposed to go in the green container. But the big one there was food waste was 16.11%. Just as a frame of reference, last year in the sorts that we did, green waste and food waste combined was a high of 19%, a low of 10%. We had a couple around 14. So this area was basically about 24 and a half percent organics, which we want to go into the the green cart. Let's switch to the next page. So again, you can see the trash material likely landfill is up at the top. The food waste is in the middle. And again, it was primarily bag kitchen waste. So again, hopefully kitchen caddies and education can get this material to change. The the other issue is that we we started tracking wet cardboard and paper. Ideally, materials that would be easily recycled if they hadn't been exposed to food waste. And about 16% of our sample was that wet contaminated paper and cardboard that's not recyclable. So let's go to the the last page now. And again, you see the green waste. This was kind of a a random sample material. It it looked like a lot of trimmings that that one person did that was just in. You know, the trash container was an extra green waste container that week. So again, at 8.52%, not a huge issue, green waste on this route. But the main problem is the the food waste and that 24.63% green waste and food waste combined. This was the highest organics contamination level that we found. So that's that's it for sort one. Are we ready to pop into sort two?
I got a quick question if possible.
Sure.
When you're talking about Placentia Avenue West, is that between Wilson and Victoria?
Well, it's bounded by Placentia to the west, Harbor to the east, Nineteenth to the south and Hamilton to the north.
But it's part of that Placentia from Victoria to Wilson because they don't have any green waste cans. Is that correct, Scott?
Well, if it stopped at Hamilton, it wouldn't go all the way to Wilson then.
Oh, it stopped at Hamilton?
Yeah.
Yeah, Hamilton was the northernmost.
Okay. Okay, no problem.
Um, Mike, just a quick question on the the cardboard is we go to the fourth cart or third third cart, whatever, the blue cart, we should see that contamination level drop, I would assume.
It should. Again, if if that material is in the trash and it's compacted in the truck, it it does get some cross contamination between materials. So if you throw it in the the dry recycling container, it may get a little bit of liquid from the containers that are in there, but it'll be nothing like when it's mixed in with food. So again, that's why we started tracking it to to help with planning.
And then on the green waste, I'm going to go back to my old friend, the Palm, Palm Franz and Palm. Does that count as contamination?
We try to keep the 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 Palm Franz in the the trash because that is is not material that would be sorted out. Again, this was more like trimmings of a bush, some flower stalks. It, to me, it was just kind of luck of the draw what we got at one location. So again, I I don't think the food waste was the big challenge or the green waste was the big challenge on that route. It was the 16% food waste. That was pretty high. And overall, the organics were the highest of any of the routes that we've done to date. Until we did the second round of the day.
All right, go ahead. Anybody else on? First, go ahead, Mike, and the second sort.
Okay, so the the second sort was from Mike Carey, who helped me with identifying the areas. This is what they they call the Republic Homes Development. It's an area bordered again by Placentia Canyon, Nineteenth and Wilson. So again, this would be, I guess, west of of Placentia there. What we found here was a lot more green waste. So again, let me just switch to my page one and and sorry for the the delays here. So again, if we scroll down to our our table, we took a bit larger of a sample there. Just from randomly filling up the containers, it was a little bit heavier. Food waste was less at 11%, but green waste was much higher at 16%. So combined at nearly 28% organics were the the largest contamination level that we've we've seen so far in our our six sorts. Uh, let's go to page two.
Just a quick comment that the difference between the two sorts. Sort one, there's a preponderance of multifamily in that area. Whereas sort two and you non Costa Mesa guys or late Costa Mesa guys call it Republic. That's actually known as the Freedom Homes. Couple of us grew up in Freedom Homes, so I that so.
My apologies for.
A big facetious. That whole area is single family, pretty much. So I think that's going to be the difference in what you're looking at on your sort.
Yeah, and and again, it was it was reflected. It was about twice as much green ways compared to the first sample. But then food waste was a bit less, but at 11% is still about twice what we would like to see. Uh, so again, on this page, you see the the non recyclable items. You know, we got pillows and some kind of weird stuffing material and then general trash. The paper and the wet cardboard was a little bit less, 14 versus 16%. But still a lot of the load is is paper and cardboard that can't be recycled due to cross contamination. And then if we go to page three, again, the green waste here and again, I said it it's partially elevated in its actual composition because it was a lot of root material. You know, it looks like a pile of dirt, but it's not. It's just the the dirt is mixed in with the the roots of the plants that were part of our sample. So obviously, you know, big gardening job. Somebody, you know, tore out a bunch of plants to start over again and they were in our sample. So again, I I said to, you know, take this one with a grain of salt. I think it was a little abnormally impacted by the the random draw. But again, food waste was about twice what we'd like to see. Again, the recyclable portion of this load, what we would consider blue container material was about the same as the the first sort. They were both right around 30%. So again, I I think if anything, this route was a little better job on the green waste than the numbers showed because of the the sample taken.
I've got one more question. Item just taking from the mixed waste carts.
Yes, we we we've just sampled the mixed waste carts. We're not sampling the organics carts at this point.
Because the Freedom Homes have the organics carts, right? So so this is in the mixed waste carts.
Yeah, yeah, so that that's why we we call it contamination. The recyclables are supposed to be in there. It's really just the organic material that's in there. So we had a 24% rate on the the first sort of organics and then 27%, although I think it was probably impacted by about 5% due to the root material and the dirt being heavier than normal clippings, trimmings.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Bob.
If this were during the time when we we could begin the finding process, how would how would that work? This is a survey of 100 homes or some some number? How are we going to narrow down? Who who gets the opportunity to?
That that's a great question and I don't know that there is a a definitive way. Now, in the regulations, they do require random anonymous complaints to be fielded.
Okay.
That can be rife with, you know, so and so's parking in my spot, so I'm going to get them.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's it's really very difficult. That's why lid flipping is a good approach. Then you can actually show that somebody has contamination. But again, to me, if you can get to under 20% contamination, that shows that the route as a whole is is doing a pretty good job. 10%, I don't know that you'll ever get much below that. You know, we'll certainly try, but yeah, house to house, it it's very difficult. It would have to be lid flipping. And that's just a random process. You can't flip every lid.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I it it is, is it, is it, well, so it's either looking in the individual bins or it's we will continue to do the characterization studies throughout the throughout your life, I guess.
Well, it's it's good to to be able to see, you know, a a balance. Again, if you're coming up with some contamination in your lid flippings, it really doesn't tell you on the route as a whole how people doing. But again, for finding, it it's kind of it it's really up to each jurisdiction. They need to have the structure in place, but there's a warning process. So even the folks that are fat in the random survey, they're going to have plenty of opportunity. You're going to go back to that site. Hey, if the problem solved, then
Yeah.
No need to to find. So hopefully that will that will resolve situations as they pop up before it gets to a a finding situation.
So so in your in your experience, is this any better or worse? Are we doing any better or worse than the other jurisdictions that you work for?
I think you're actually doing a bit better. You have more of a mature program. You guys have been doing it longer than than a lot of the the cities that that we we look at. And again, until we did the Monday sorts, everything had been below 20%. And really, a lot of locations are trying to get below 20% contamination. I I think the the challenge you guys have is everybody was so used to one container and everything going in one container for a while. You know, that may add to the propensity of throwing the 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 food waste in the trash more. Have nothing scientific on it, but basically if everything but your your green waste has been going into a container, you're not really used to sorting anything beyond what's going on outside the home.
Yeah.
Though you know, again, education time should improve it. But really, we had a little bit of a challenge on Monday, but as a whole, you know, you had 10%, 14%, 14% and 19% contamination on the sorts last year. I'd said those are all fairly good. And here we had a situation with one of the random sorts where we got a lot of dirt and roots that I think pushed the contamination level up a bit more.
Are are these are these results reportable in the future?
Excuse me, reportable?
Yeah, to.
Yeah, I I mean, these these reports you could provide to Cal Recycle just to show them your your monitoring efforts, what you're finding. I would, you know, ask CRNR staff, whoever's doing the follow up. If we're doing extra education in that area, it's really a nice bookend to show, hey, here's what we found. It was a bit higher than we'd like to see, so here's what we did to to address that. It might also help you to target your lid flipping to say, hey, we've got to do some more lid flipping in the Paradise Homes or Republic Homes area, depending on a new resident or a more seasoned resident, what they call it. But again, you know, the area and if the contamination is high, then you you focus your efforts there.
Yeah, okay, then have have we done any routes where we've gone back and done extra education? Maybe this is a question for staff. Education in on on a particular route? Or have we, you know, we've done, I think, what, five of these now or some number?
Six total with the the second.
Yeah. So well, I guess in the future, I'd like to see the what what did be reminded, I guess, I'm sure I've seen it, what the we're going to have some town halls in the future. We probably obviously been on the website. So maybe that's a question later for staff.
Yeah, and I I think just really quick, in doing the two sorts at a time, you have eight designated trash routes. So over the course of the year, we will do every route. And you're also supposed to do the route surveys of every route once per year. So it would probably be a good structure to now have the lid flipping on these two T1, these two Monday routes that we did, one and T4.
Yeah.
So again, that way you'd be reinforcing finding specific homes with issues. And it's a present approach.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions for Mike? Quick question for Mike Carey. How many routes do we have on Mondays roughly?
Uh, well, I think you have, you have, you have, gosh, that would be a better CRNR question. I know this is T1 and T4, but I know from looking at routing, there was what what we were considering was eight routes in the city for sorting purposes. So I don't know. I see Mike there. He can he can answer that better than I.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look and see how many we have on Monday. It's, I believe it's seven or eight trash routes.
For curiosity, because that would be one of the days we check.
Yeah, I I would guess Monday would be your best choice after the weekend. You know, springtime this time too.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions for for any of the mics? All right, thanks, both both you guys. Appreciate the the report, Mike.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, let's go to the battery recycling report.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is the results of our very successful alkaline battery recycling program where schools do a friendly competition to see, excuse me, who can collect the most alkaline battery cycling, alkaline batteries within the year. This this year, we had 17 schools participate. All all total, they they collected over 12,500 pounds of of batteries. As a result, the the district awarded over $7,500 in monetary compensation to the schools. The the winner this year was surprise, surprise, Davis Davis Magnet Elementary School, who collected 2,382 pounds of batteries. So they were awarded the 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 highest prize of $1,200. Second place became was Polerita Elementary School with 1,958 pounds. They were awarded $1,000. And in third place was Sonora Elementary School, who collected 1,320 pounds. They were awarded $800. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
I had a question. What happened to College Park School?
Yeah.
They didn't participate. I don't know.
They didn't want to be in it or?
We we reach out to all the schools, numerous occasions, remind them all about the program and it's really a voluntary basis if they want to participate or not.
That's the first time I've ever seen that.
Yeah.
I have a connection at College Park. I'm going to find out.
I did too. My kids all went there.
My grandkid goes there, so.
Team or scout Estancia's back in. That's good.
Yes. I was surprised, not surprised, pleasantly surprised to see Child's Pace involved. Child's Pace isn't, they're not a school. I mean, they're an after school program that does really terrific terrific work. And it's nice to see that. Why do we have to tape the nine volt batteries?
Why do we have to what?
They they start fires, Mike.
Really? Okay, I'm just curious. Are are we going to present checks like we've done the past or?
We have already. We've mailed checks. Reference and we took pictures with the top three schools.
It's kind of aspect. So the schools that aren't currently participating, like I'll throw Newport Harbor High, for instance, have they have those schools ever part like sounds like College Park has, but has the other schools that weren't on here, have they, did they used to participate typically?
I'd have to go back and look. It's been 10 years since we've been running the program and they may have previously and.
And is it just a matter of you all shooting an email, phone call to the principal or assistant principal, that sort of deal?
Yes.
Okay. And and when will next year's program get started?
Begins in September. To August of the following.
Got it. As someone who's doing this right now, trying to contact every school is a challenge. So to even have this participation, good stuff. So keep it up. Thank you. Good, good job. All right, item four, there's nothing else.
Caitlin Tratt will be giving this report, Mr. President.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. So the last April study session, the board asked staff to provide additional information on the two years, fiscal year 2023, 24 and 24, 25. Staff calculate the long term help person for your contribution cost with the two new position added. Staff estimate the employer contribution cost for the current, for all current staff and two new position, the administrative assistant and the office specialist will be 295,500 in fiscal year 23, 24 and will increase to 604,900 by fiscal year 32, 33. So it will a little bit double by in the next 10 years if we add the two new position. Staff also contacted the city of Costa Mesa to inquire on the city's classification and compensation compensation study. The city has not completed the study in the recent years. Staff contacted the Mesa Water District and found out that in 2021, they conducted a district wide class and comp study for 30, 30, 31 classification for 65,000. Staff also look into the experience modification factor for fiscal year 2022, 23. It was 165% and has decreased to 146% in fiscal year 20 23, 24. The E-mod percentage decreased. However, the workers' compensation costs are increasing mainly due to salaries and increases in salaries and staffing. Staff budgeted 110,000 per year for workers' comp for the next two fiscal years. Board also asked about the manufacturer for the 777 pump station. The unit is manufactured by Little Fuse. And lastly, the board asked about the funding for the demolition of the old Hitchcrafter building at the district yard. Staff has discussed it with the district council to use the facilities revolving fund to support the demolition. And it turns out that yes, we can use that fund. The headquarters and the district yard have been identified as serving the needs of all residents. In the past, the district has used the fund, the facilities revolving fund to support the purchase of the purchase and installation of the solar panels for this building and also the purchase of this building as well. And right now, we're using the fund for the tolerant, the drought tolerance landscaping. Staff has updated the budget and is requesting to transfer 200,000 from the facilities revolving fund to support the demolition of the just district yard, old Hitch crafting after building. And staff also reviewed the budget and made some other adjustment. One of them is RBH engineer, they submitted a request to increase their rate, the civil engineering rate by 10% and inspection rates by 14. And inspection rates by fourteen point thirty-five percent effective July twenty twenty-three. Staff will bring this item to the board at a later meeting for board approval. But for right now, for budgeting purposes, staff has increased the budget for. The contractual engineering and inspection services to reflect the rate increases requested. It will cost the district an additional twenty-four thousand five hundred in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And twenty thousand eight hundred in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Staff has reviewed the budget and made some adjustments to maintain a balanced budget. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President, a couple of things, so going right on that last statement, so with the. Budget, Terry, what was cut in other areas that, I mean, is there a summary that? We made it up?
So for the two hundred thousand dollars that I'm using from the facility revolving fund. So that's all in wastewater, so.
Got it, so it's not like you cut out. Two hundred from something else, it was based on thankfully that council reviewed and we're able to use that fund. That's basically, all right, that's, that's great. And then on the compensation study, so a couple of things. I mean, Costa Mesa stated some pretty concrete facts in their recent council meeting when they approved some significant salary increases. So, I mean, I have to assume they got those numbers from somewhere, because if their staff made it up, I don't think that's what happened. I just, they, in their council meeting stated about their level of, uh, employees ver, in the county and. Like, where did these numbers come from?
They, they most likely did it themselves, an internal survey, just by calling up cities and getting the information. And they have a bigger HR department than we do, so they have the resources to do that.
Okay, because when I read like, oh, they haven't done one, I'm like, well, they had to have done something.
They just didn't hire a consultant, they did it themselves internally.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty common for them to do internal studies. I, I remember having those reports where they would designate a couple of staff members just to randomly call or, and not randomly, but they had some scientific method to it. So that's kind of what I. Had assumed they did.
Okay, that's, I just want to clarify, because that's good. And then, you know, going back, I, I've still got concerns at fifty grand. Just still seems excessive, where did that number come from?
If I can answer that, so we've surveyed other agencies, the cost that they have spent on that Mesa Water. Did seventy-five thousand for their study and I think ended up spending sixty-four thousand and then. Not to exceed seventy-five thousand. And the cost, final cost was sixty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-five. And then they also, if, if any additional needs arise, they also had set aside a hundred and fifty-five dollars per hour for the consultant to follow up.
So the fifty came from basically what Mesa Water did.
And, and other agencies too, over the years we have, and then what, what the cost was five years ago compared to now, we have additional employees. And, and, and what we're wanting to be included in the study, so it's, it's, it's based upon the market rate. So it would be not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, hopefully it would come in under that.
Okay, and what's the, uh, what's the action item for that study then? We get the study back, given us info, what, what are we doing with it?
So then the consultant would report the full study, any changes that they would make to classifications, benefits. They would present that to the board if they make changes to our salary. The ranges to our salaries or add positions or reclassify current positions would be included in that. And that would all be presented to the board and then the board would be able to take action on that.
So if I understand that correctly, so that they come up and say, all right, here's ten positions and here's the current salary. We're recommending that that salary is bumped by fifteen percent. Is that?
It would be, but I think the good news is we are currently pretty competitive, so I don't see any huge jumps.
And that's why I'm, I guess I'm trying to figure out why. We know where we are in the grand scheme of things, give or take. Fifty grand to tell us what we kind of already know, and then what are we really gonna do with that information?
And so it, as, as part of our strategic plan, we do a, a classification compensation study every five years to remain, to make sure that we're remaining competitive. Sometimes there are positions because duties change that need to be reclassified. Right now, we're looking at possibly reorganizing the solid waste department. So we would want the consultant to give us, to advise us in that area, they're the experts, they know. What, we give them all of the information, so we start with, the consultant would sit down with staff, do sort of an orientation and explain how it all works. And staff would be involved in the whole process. The first thing that they do is they ask staff to do a list of all their duties, everything they're doing, not what's on their job description, but what they actually do. And then the consultant compares that to, to the job description. And that's when sometimes we do need to make changes, reclassify people, because you don't want people working out of class. That could be, you know, a liability there legally, um, when we're not paying them to do their actual duties. So it's, it's helpful with that. And I think, having an expert do that, they do it all the time, whereas, you know, I don't, Tanisha and I are the HR department. We don't know exactly what other agencies, finance managers do, or their, their district clerk. And another thing about our district is we are unique, we are so small that we're kind of all doing a little bit of everything, touching other departments all the time. So again, it helps us to make sure that employees are working within their classification. It also helps with retention and recruitment, that we are remaining competitive, that we are aware of what other agencies are doing. Through the year, Tanisha and I often do surveys on our own of other agencies for different things we're, we're, we're looking for. For instance, when the electrical instrumentation technician, when that position, we wanted to create that. We surveyed other agencies, did our research and came up with that job description. So we do our own internal research and surveys as well. But this would be more of a comprehensive study that the consultant, who are the experts, can do overall for the district. In the past, we have included board compensation, just to get a feel for what other agencies are doing. And at the board's direction, we could include that in this study as well.
I mean, you mentioned, you know, part of our, I think, strength is our size and everyone pitches in, does a little bit of everything. I mean, which to me, that's a strength and a good thing. I mean, this is gonna say, well, this classification shouldn't be doing this. But we do it because we're all teams, so that's why I'm like, if they tell us like, well, that person shouldn't be doing this, well, yeah, but that's what we do. So what are we gonna do with that? I just, you know.
Or we would add that to that job description.
Okay, there, all right, that, okay, and then would this. Uh, proposal or this, uh, going out to bid come before the board before we did it?
So we would put out an RFP and then we would rate that RFP as we do for, for any. But we don't typically, at the end, we don't typically come to the board. We internally would choose it based on, on the, the factors that we use.
It's, it's under, it's in there, my authority to sign, because it'd be less than twenty-five thousand. But if the board wants to approve it, we can bring it back to you for approval, it's not a problem.
I just, I, I don't know what it is, I have such a sticking point on this thing, I would like another shot at it, but.
I got the same opinion that you do. I think we should look at it, and I don't know why, because since you're such a small agency that can't. Add it to the job description without having to pay fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, that's my point too.
Because if, if I went, I mean, if I spent on a, me, I've actually done something like this similar on citywide. But it's, it's twelve hundred dollars an hour if you spend an entire forty-hour week with one person. It's a lot of money. I mean. Just, I, I would like this to come back before the board and maybe we could.
Let me, let me talk it over with staff and then we'll, we'll come back before your adoption of the recommendation.
Thank you.
Mike, can I ask a question? They, they're, the proposed reorganization. Does the, the proposed reorganization come after the comp and class study? And. Do, would we then tell the consultant, you know, what we expect the duties to be? Or, uh, the, 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 you know, what, what is the order of that potential process?
So we would meet with the consultant, give them all of the background information on the district or departments. What exactly we're looking for. We would bounce options, they would give us options of what we could do or positions. They would work with us to develop that, they would make suggestions and then it's, it's, you know, at, at, at our discretion, whether or not. We approve all of that or, or not.
I mean.
I'm sorry.
Can, can the reorg positions be defined, I guess is my real question, the, the potential reorg. We're, we're looking at some reorg, reorganization, I believe in, of staff in, in this budget. Can that, is that? Definable?
Yeah, yes, we can do that.
Yeah, okay. So we would write a, well. I guess my question still is, does the comp and class study come first or does the reorg? Potentially come first?
Well, I think in our, in our, in our position, the, the, the comp and class study comes first.
Okay, and, and you, you have in mind what you intend the reorg to be and you can tell them that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And then they would also be able to share with us what maybe other agencies are doing, smaller agencies or how they, they handle. We, we are unique, but it, it, it would be beneficial. To, to survey other agencies as to how they handle their, how their solid waste department is structured. If, I mean, maybe we don't need to make any changes, that's another, I'd want, maybe, maybe we could, maybe we have staff that we could reclassify and take on different positions. We, we don't know, that's, that's why we are looking to the consultant, who would be experts in this area. And, and again, we're trying to. You know, we're trying to avoid liability in, in having employees working out of class. You know, here's their job description, but really they're doing this. So that, that, that's a big factor also.
Art, okay, just a couple of questions. RBH requesting ten percent and fourteen percent increases, do we negotiate with that? Just because they're asking for it?
The answer is yes. They made a proposal, we made a counterproposal, we're in the process of discussing that right now. There, nothing formal has been provided to our general manager, although he has been involved, he's been looking at the. Unit prices that RBH is, is proposed. I will say overall, they're, they're very relative, their consulting firms are very. But that doesn't preclude us from, I'll say, counter, doing a counter on what they're proposing and, and, and trying, you know, to get. More value for the dollar, I guess I'll say.
And I have a second question, Hitchcrafters, do we store equipment in that Hitchcrafters facility?
We do right now, yes.
What do we do with that if it's tearing down, torn down?
We can, uh, we can, we can build some, like, covers in, in the. Properties, so it protects, like, we have, we have stored like hoses there, so we can, we can cover the hoses and have some, uh, a cover over it, protect it from like, uh, rain and, and sunlight. Which is, I think the sun and those are the two weather elements that, that had the most impact on those hoses, because of, you know, they'll dry them out, crack them up, crack.
Would there, would there be enough room in the facility to do that with the trucks taking over those locations?
There, there should be, you know, right now, I just got word, you know, the, the lay flat hoses that, that the, the board approved, they're arriving today and they're huge. And so it'd be interesting how staffs can be able to fit those, those trailers in the yard. We, we do believe with, with the Hitchcrafter Building removed, that's gonna alleviate some of that, that tightness in, in the facility.
Curiosity, because I know we, we, we use that facility a lot.
Yeah, we, again, we just use the garage part of it, there's other, like, there's an office, there's a bathroom, we don't use that part. And so are we using the full passive, no, we're not in that building. So we think we can get better use out of that property if, if that building is, is demolished.
Statically, it's a good idea too.
There, I think there's a meth and one, at least one mezzanine in the. In, in the building, is, is a room for improving the potential storage of some of the materials in the. In, in the, in the building left on site.
Are you talking about the Hitchcrafter Building?
Of the other one.
No.
Yes, there's always room, there's always, we can always do some reorganization and, and improve on, on storage capacity in our existing building.
I had, I had one last question on the crane, we bought that ten years ago, knowing. One, one of the, one, one piece of logic for getting a new one is, one, it's ten years old. And two, it, it. Does not provide service to some, for, for some of the needs. We knew that going in, and my, my real question is. I can't, can't imagine that that thing has gotten much use, so a ten-year life. You know, in its ten-year life and, and what, and, and my, my question would be what? We have to, we have to bring in other equipment for, for some of the, some of the hoisting needs. And, and what, what is that? Is, is that just the bigger pump stations or?
The, the existing crane that, that we have now in the, in the proposed new crane that we're, we're posing the budget would accommodate all, all, all the pumps. It could lift all the pumps in, in our, in our station, so we wouldn't require any rentals or any additional equipment.
Oh, okay, my, I, I must, I must not have read that correctly there. Does it get much use? I mean, we do, we, I think we do annual inspections of the pumps, you know, and they're periodically maintenance required and or replacement required.
Right, we pull those pumps every, all, all forty pumps, we pull them out every year. So, so that crane does get usage.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure in my mind that that's extensive usage. Well, anyway, you know, I, I. I, I think that's a future question, but. When it actually comes to buying that piece of equipment, maybe a little more explanation, maybe.
I can, I can, yes, I can have, um, I can have Steve Connell come to the next study session and he can explain to you the, the usage that we use at the crane truck.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'd just like to see it and know how many work days a year it, it's needed. And why, why we think it's wearing out and if not, why are we replacing it, but. I have a vehicle that's many, many years old and it's been well maintained and I'm never gonna, I may never replace. I may not live long enough to. Okay, I'm, that, that's enough for me.
Just gonna ask if you had anything else, but apparently you don't. Okay, anything else on the budget? Can you kind of go over the timeline of where we are in the budget and where, when we're gonna be looking at approval? Just a quick overview of where, where we go from here.
Well, we've got some more information, the board's requested some more information right back to you. So we can get that information back to your study session in June. And then with the anticipation, we're all good, then we can adopt it in your board, June board meeting.
That's kind of what I was.
In the month, so two more meetings, so we're looking at, we're looking at two more meetings before adoption.
Yeah.
If you want a special meeting, we can also do that too, we need to.
Okay.
But, sorry, can you just repeat, so right now is May ninth, eighth, whatever it is. Are the next, that information we've requested, we'll come back at our June study session. And then our June full board meeting at the end of the month. So just in case, is there a way to maybe bring this information back to this month's board meeting? Just, cause I mean, we have to approve a budget by June thirtieth or whatever. So I'm just getting a little worried that if all of a sudden uh I'm famous for this, oh, I forgot to ask this. And then it's like, oh crud. I don't wanna hold up the whole deal.
Sure. We, I, I think we can, we'll do our best to bring it.
If, if the information's available by our board meeting, I just think might as well agendize it if there's even one or two pieces of info. I don't know. Either that or I like Scott's idea if we have to.
Okay.
An, an, an emergency, a special meeting just to get it. That way we can focus on it and not worry about other. So let, let's see what you guys have by the June. Let us know what week or.
If we can bring, if we can bring it in, maybe we'll do it.
Okay. Yeah, God, that's good. Okay. Anything else? Then we'll go to item five.
Good morning, uh, Board of Directors. Um, as you know, for about two and a half weeks on our uh failed pipe over on Pollerino. I suspect some of you drove by the site this morning, didn't see a whole lot going on. Um, the reason why you don't see much going on this morning is that rather than have people standing around charging us, I, I periodically say, it's time to regroup. You guys go back, do your other things. And that way we're not getting charged for standby and all the other services. It's bad enough having equipment um onsite for that, that period of time. Here, I'm trying to manage all of the expenses uh associated with this emergency. The water level out there is about eighteen to twenty feet below the road surface. Our pipe is twenty six feet below the road surface. So the difference is about, um, I'm gonna say uh six, seven, eight feet. Uh, our water, our pipe is about uh six, seven, eight feet below water level, depending on where you are in the roadway. Um, we currently have six uh de-watering wells, two on the west side of the channel, which is the Bristol side or the hotel side. And we've got four watering wells on the east side, which is um towards the state route fifty five. Um, and I will say, uh, I'm, there's been too much groundwater and we're not making enough, uh, lowering the groundwater fast enough. Uh, however, I do not wanna add any more wells at this point in time because I don't see a big change when we added those last two wells. It's what we think, it's a theory. Um, and it probably doesn't really matter. But I wanna explain that we think there is a stream, active stream below the channel currently um, um, taking place. And because our sewer pipe crosses that channel, we think the current working theory is that that stream underneath the channel is filling up our pipe trench. Cause we put up our pipe in a rock, in a rock trench. Uh, and then that rock trench is filled up with the water from the stream and that's precluding us from, from affecting what we need to do. I will say that I was very hopeful yesterday. We uh engaged a different contractor. He has a special robot that he has built. Uh, and, and we came very, very close to having him install a, I'll say a point repair liner at the point where the water is coming into our pipeline. There was just a little bit too much water. Uh, discussing this with the contractors on site, they are going to deploy a different method of removing the water from our pipeline. Um, we're not certain it'll be successful, but we wanna try one more time either this Wednesday or this Thursday to remove the water. Cause if we can get a point liner at the point where our pipe is broken, we can then finish the repair and move, move forward. Now, if this doesn't work this week, we're gonna have to take backup, do something different. Whether that's install a new siphon pipe, whether it's dig down, open up the roadway, repair the existing pipe. Uh, it could potentially be a temporary pump station on the east side or the state route fifty five side pumping over um the channel to the manhole on the west side near the hotel uh for several months while we let mother nature do its thing. We're kind of looking at various options right now. I'm, I'm setting up a meeting with our general contractor, uh, the, the uh lining contractor, our consulting engineer. And we're gonna talk about um various prices. And, and what I wanna do as an example is one item is we dig down and make a point repair. Uh, if we're gonna dig down and, and open up our pipeline, which is twenty six feet down, um, I'm gonna have shoring, I'm gonna have more de-watering, I'm gonna have all kinds of uh construction activities. So what's that price compared to pushing a new pipe underneath the channel? I don't know at this point in time, but I'm asking those questions and this week we're gonna start developing estimates or budgetary numbers to do that kind of activity. I will say that to date, um, and this is also based on, um, I'll, I'll say some estimates, uh, including work from this week. But um, right now I'm estimating that we spent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with our prime contractor. Uh, in situ form, the contractor that we awarded the lining contract to, we've spent about a little less than a hundred and forty thousand dollars on extra work. And then um, there's, I'll say, about thirty thousand worth of work that we've done under the original contract. It's about four hundred and uh, uh, twenty thousand dollars. And then we still have a lion's share of the contract work still to do. And if you add that in, uh, we're probably right now at about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I think the, the, the board has approved about a six hundred and thirty nine or forty thousand dollar item. So, so far we haven't, even with two additional wells, we still haven't, um, in my estimate, exceeded the amount that we've been authorized to spend on this emergency to date. But I don't have a lot of numbers for you. We're gonna take this week and figure this out. Come back with probably four or five options on how to deal with this. I, I will say the city of Costa Mesa Engineering Department or Public Works Department, they would like to get this thing resolved because their street is ma, it's a major impact to Pollerino. And that is a, a thoroughfare to the state route fifty five to and from. And there's a hotel and a, and a market and other miscellaneous businesses along this area. And in fact, I think we all wanna get this resolved. Unfortunately, I have not been able to get this system repaired. And at this point, I will say, I don't believe we can put that pipeline in, back into service in the condition that it is in. I just can't do it. Um, I'd be afraid that um it's gonna fill up with sand. Cause every time we come back, that pipe is fu, um, full of sand again. So, and, and every time we attempt to clean it, line it and do work on it. And so I, I do not believe that we can, we can move forward by just putting it back in service. Nor do I want to, because I believe there's a potential for exfiltration and because there's a, a, a channel there, I'd be worried that we would have um, um sewage going into our groundwater system. And I just, I just, just don't feel like we can do that. Um, I will bring back to the coming board meeting, options, costs, other things. I will know a lot more in about uh a week from now. Uh, I've been trying to keep our general manager and our uh board president uh appraised of all of our activities. I guess I'm sharing my frustration that I've, I've, I was hoping that I could have some good news today. I still don't know where we're at, how we're gonna do this thing, but I am working to make that happen. As an example, after we built the first four de-watering wells, I noticed that the water level really wasn't receding like we thought. We took a step back. I brought in a, a geotechnical engineer and a hydrogeologist. We looked at it based on their recommendation. We did build two more wells approximately where we thought they would be. Um, and again, because of the amount of groundwater, it still hasn't done any good. So it's not like we're guessing. Uh, we are trying to take calculated steps to make this repair. So I assure you, we're doing what we can, but siphons and uh, uh, are always very, very difficult when they go wrong. And that's what's happening here. I will remind you that I think it was four years or so ago, we had plaster in one of our siphons. I think this agency spent uh in excess of a half a million dollars getting that pipe repaired. And that was about a five month, four month effort, uh, general manager. So, yeah, just saying, it's never easy when you have a pipe that's down deep and going under something else. Uh, so that concludes my report. I'm open to questions. Uh, and, and I guess my hope is to bring something back to you at our next board meeting.
I think the good news, you do have some good news. There's no sewer that's been spilled anywhere.
Well, that is true. We, we are not, no, there is no sewage leaving our system. And over the last three weeks, sewage has not left our system.
I, I, and I think I, I, this is a question. The preponderance of groundwater has to have something to do with the recent weather. I mean, if you'd have done this project three years ago, you, it'd already be done, I would guess.
Yes, that, that's correct. When we did the assessment, after the um, after we made the repair of that siphon a few years back, uh, the districts rightly so assessed all of the siphons. And we came up with a, I'll say a, a list of all the repairs that needed to be done. I will say from that list, all but two siphons uh really needed extensive repairs. Uh, we made, and, and when that study was done, I guess we're, is, there was no gushers, no water coming into our, there were defects. There were, there were, there were holes in the pipelines. There were cracks. There were other things. But there was not this amount of groundwater. So I think unfortunately for us, timing's everything. If we had started the whole program a year earlier, we may have gotten through the worst of it before we had this big rainfall. But unfortunately, timing's everything.
We appreciate the effort.
Um, Mark, that you said earlier in your presentation that, uh, you know, these, these pipelines are embedded in, in a rock. You know, there's a certain amount of rock around to, to uh support the pipe. And you're thinking that the, the groundwater is traveling from upstream or downstream, you know, down that trench. And if there is groundwater upstream or downstream, you know, that's a logical place for it to go and, and easy place for it to go. Um, have you considered putting a collar, you know, some concrete collars or extensions around that trench material upstream or downstream? Or do you think that's even feasible? To slow, or slow the water travel down around, you know, and, and it's gotta go around native ground, which I don't know what it is up there, but.
Well, the native ground right now is, uh, I'll say, uh, fine sand to silty sand. Uh, it's very porous.
Very, yeah, very. So, okay, yeah, that, 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 that's not accomplishable probably. Okay.
Yeah, we, we have um Director Ooten. We have looked at ground freezing as an option. Um, that's looking to be somewhere of five hundred thousand to six hundred fifty thousand. No guarantee that it'll work. Um, we're, we're in the process of talking to another contractor that does uh grouting. Um, not sure what potential that has to help us, but we're hope, you know, when, what they would do is what you said. They would put in some two to four inch diameter holes down to our pipe. And they would try to grout inject in order to slow down the, or stop the groundwater altogether. Again, not certain how the success rate of that is. We're still in discussions with this contractor. I just don't have any concrete information right now for you.
Okay, thank you.
Unintended, I don't know.
I don't, do we really wanna mess with the gr, I mean, how many water districts are gonna get upset if we screw around with the groundwater?
Well, we're just talking about around the pipe, around our particular pipe.
Yeah. Just a quick question and uh, I don't know, comment, but um if you get this information, the three, four, or five different plans, whatever makes sense and some numbers associated. Say you get them this week. I mean, sounds like is there a need to do a special meeting or being that it's an emergency thing, just move forward? Or how's that work instead of waiting another couple of weeks to get all this information back to us?
Well, I'll, I'll say, um, well, the general manager and I discuss this project on a daily basis. Except while he was on vacation, of course.
I'm sure there's probably an email or a call somewhere.
But, but that being said, um, he and I will continue to discuss options. Uh, we do, I believe, we currently have emergency authority to keep the project moving, making the repairs or installing new pipe or whatever we need. If it's, if we can, can, um, if we can determine that is the best and or only option, we will move forward.
Okay.
Um, that being said, if we need a special meeting, if you would like a special meeting, the general manager and I could meet with the board of directors um early next week. But I don't know at this time that we need that particularly, uh, to, to do that particularly. I will say, and I apologize for not answering um your question, Director Echols, from last you were asking about uh overhead and other things on the contract. Um, I went back and I did a little homework and basically uh it's, we're, we have a limitation on how much overhead and markup that the contractor has and can charge us. It's standard in our contract and we're using that standard markup and um all those types of risk um limitations. So they can't just in, um, charge us anything they want.
Is that like fifteen or is it more?
It varies from five to fifteen percent depending on the item. There's about eight to ten or twelve items that specifically have percentage points on them. And I'm happy to bring that back and discuss it further again at the board meeting.
No, that's.
But it's our standard language. You've seen it um at the contracts that we've brought before you uh um on standard. That's all I'll say.
Nope, that's, that's what I was looking for, to make sure it was capped on standardized contract, even though it's T and M. So, um, okay, that's good to know. So I mean, I'm just saying, yes, obviously if you get plan A and plan A is all we can do, you go on plan A. But if you get plan A and B, I mean, I'm just suggesting a special meeting. So we're not waiting. Cause let's just get it done. If there is a plan A and B, that's like, hey, what do we do here? So we can talk about that.
You wanna add anything to that, uh, Scott?
Thank you. Thank you all. Anything else? Um, any comments or any other items we need to discuss? Bob, anything else for the good of the order?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Or the bad, whatever. Uh, staff, thank you. Good job, everybody. I, I got a lot going on and we appreciate it. That we will adjourn at nine, nine oh eight.